Good afternoon and welcome to the October 30th special meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call please?
Council members Draymond, Quintero, Weaver, Eusefian, Aaron Njerion.
Here. And where did we leave off?
Good morning Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We left off with the conclusion of the park projects. And I would like with your indulgence to back up just a little bit to the what we previously called the Glendale High School tennis courts. But you recall at your last meeting, we gave that a more neutral description, the ARC replacement tennis courts. I did have a conversation with the superintendent last week about this project in particular. And we both agreed that our ability to come together on business terms for development of the high school courts would probably take more time and frankly, a great deal more energy than we can devote in our need to make a commitment for replacement of the ARC courts in a reasonable timeframe. And we both agreed that frankly, we should devote our energy and keep our eye on what is the more important project, both for the district and I think for us, a higher priority, and that is the soccer fields at Columbus School. So with that, we agreed that we, the city, should proceed with other options on the replacement courts for the ARC. With that, I've asked George to bring up for your review, the plan the staff previously looked at for new construction for replacement courts at Fremont Park. With that, George, why don't you take us through it?
Yeah, Fremont Park currently has eight courts as you can see. What we plan on doing is, if I can, I think we've got another...
Artie. Thank you.
Right here, you'll see that there's a basketball court and a dirt field here that's used sometimes for soccer. What we want to do is, is we'll put the courts, two courts right over here, place them right about here. And the cost to do that is approximately the same as it would have been for the six projects over, the six courts over at Glendale High School. Do you have the other graphic copy?
So George, the trees, the larger trees we see along the exterior, they would remain?
Um, yeah, right along the exterior, those trees would remain. The others would have to be removed.
Oh, I see, you've inserted the two courts here.
Right, this is just the graphic that we've inserted in here.
Oh, that's cool, okay.
We wanted to see what we could fit in here. And it is possible to put two courts here. That way, it allows the concessionaire, you know, to oversee ten courts at this point.
Those two trees up at the top though, they would remain?
Right, these would remain over here, as would the side trees here. We would move the basketball court down here, and that's also part of the cost.
That additional blacktop area, is that parking or is that just an open court area?
This up here?
No, down.
Down here, this is where...
Keep going.
Oh, this, this down here?
Right in through there, yeah.
This is just dirt.
Oh, this is just dirt?
Yeah, this was initially put in here by the parks department years ago. Instead of grass, they thought this would be used for soccer.
Really?
Right.
Is that what it's used for?
Yeah, it's used for soccer.
Okay.
And it does make sense, I mean, people do play on it.
Dirt soccer?
Well, I remember years back, I used to play at the park over in Las Feliz. There was no grass left, so we literally played on dirt. So this is, again, this is where we would locate it.
Any other questions about this?
Go back to the previous design, previous slide.
That's the park as it is?
No. The one before that?
Yes.
Okay. Why not put the two south of the basketball court, so this way you don't have to tear up the basketball court and rebuild it again, unless the basketball court needs to be completely redone?
You mean down here?
Yeah.
I think it just, it connects it a little bit better just up here with the rest of the courts.
Then you're incurring more cost on tearing up a basketball court and putting a new basketball court in.
Question might be whether it will stick in there and not impact the restroom.
Yeah, right here.
It's pretty narrow between the restroom and the street line.
Let me see if... Yeah, I think it would impact it if we go back to the other... Staff had looked at that. If you see, if you shift it down, it goes right into the corner of the restroom.
Yeah, but you could, you could put...
Shift it down here...
But you could put one next to the basketball court and put the other one next to the four on this side.
Good.
All you have is a couple of trees. And if you do that, then you don't have to tear up the basketball court, and that will save you, because based on what you guys built in Carr Park, that court, that's a lot of concrete and it's like six inches thick, that's a lot of money.
This, this basketball court would be about $98,000 to relocate.
Yeah, well, that's $98,000, a big chunk of money.
I guess the point, and this is just a conception that you have, so the point is more that we're moving away from the Glendale High School and coming back to this where we were.
And we can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them...
We can...
We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them... We can look at a number of different options on how you'd place the courts, split them up, put them...
them up, put them at different ends, try to preserve it, and we can bring all that back to you. But the mayor's correct, the underlying question here is moving away from the high school and instead focusing either on, this is an alternative, or you have another alternative, which is the-
We did look at the sports complex, but that's about 1.2 million dollars.
Much more expensive.
And where would that go?
That would be, there's a hill, there's a hill up here by the, right here?
Oh, is that the famous hill?
By the soccer fields, right.
We talked about it before.
But then, that's going to require retaining walls because of the amount of dirt that we'd have to grade, so a lot of grading.
How many you could put in there?
Two.
That's all?
Right.
That big hill?
A lot of what you see is the slope, see the downward slope? If you took the hill down even farther, but then you'd have significantly higher retaining walls. You've got more space outside the soccer field, but a large part of it's the slope that gets you up to the flatter area.
It's almost two-hundred thousand dollars just with grading and retaining wall for this option. It's just a lot of dirt.
We can't get more than two, huh?
No, we tried squeezing it in there, two is all we could get in there.
Wow. I think the ten courts at Fremont are rather attractive, I mean, you could almost call that a tennis complex at that point, so, and it is rather centrally located.
And it allows the concessionaire to now take on two more courts, and it creates the opportunity for people who are playing here to play at Fremont.
Are they the same concessionaires that we have at the A R C?
No.
Someday, let's talk about those concessionaires. I still get grumblings from people that aren't permitted access due to the concessionaire, so, just so I'm clear, before I say anything about it, I'd just like to have a better idea of what's going on.
We're going to come back to the city council, some recommendations, because we are going to come out and rebid those concessionaire contracts. Yeah, we've been looking at those.
That'll be the right time, yes. And those baseball fields are well-used, George? The three in the-
Oh, yeah. The baseball fields are used both for baseball and soccer practice. So all these fields are used. If you'll notice, this field over here is a lot of dirt in the outfield because the kids are using it for A W S O soccer, so, it's, again, it's just a soccer, the need for more soccer fields is underscored just by looking at these fields when you go out there. It's constantly used.
George, is that a bad photo or behind the building, what's back there, is that flat or is it hill?
Back here?
No, 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 come back, yeah, right there. Is this a bad photo?
Yeah, it's not a good photo.
That's just-
So it's just a slope?
It's sloped.
Very steep.
There's a little bit of area here, but not much.
Okay. So you can't go there?
Where were the batting cages going?
We were thinking about putting them right back here, there's a little area right over here that's enough to put some outdoor batting cages. We've also talked to one company who would like to take this concession stand and maybe do an indoor batting, but I think once they took a look at the cost, they decided to back out of it.
Because you have to cut more into the slope, don't you?
Yeah, and then just the cost of building something, instead of just putting netting up there, fencing and netting.
Okay. And the property immediately west, George?
Over here?
That is all Caltrans-owned?
That's Caltrans.
Or we're leasing it to them, or?
No, it's just Caltrans-owned.
Because that's a significant, I mean, you could fit courts, maybe another soccer field.
Absolutely.
All sorts of good stuff there.
But I think what they've done over the years is, they have some office space in Los Angeles, and they've moved engineers to these modulators up here. So they're there for an extended period of time, unless we're able to somehow convince Caltrans to move. But they actually moved more people in here, into these modulators.
They used to have a lot of equipment there, too, which we had them remove.
They used to store materials and equipment very unsightly. We were rather surprised when they began moving modulators on there, because as we know, once Caltrans moves into modulators on a piece of property, it becomes very permanent.
Right. Or else this could make a great area for more recreation.
A lot of space, yeah.
Right.
Interestingly, they have access to it through the freeway.
They do, they-
But they wouldn't give us access to the park.
Although they were, they were pretty good about giving us access when we were working on the artificial turf, because we had to have trucks come in and deliver the soil, the dirt, and the substrate. But they also use, there's an exit here, they also use to go out and down fern, if you allow them access to.
Okay. And you'll be back to us then, George, as this develops? So I think we're looking at Fremont.
We'll go ahead, if council's okay with Fremont, we'll go ahead, and we're at thirty percent design drawings, we were at thirty percent design drawings, we'll just pick those right back up and move forward with Fremont tennis courts.
George, the timing on taking out the A R C courts and how that'll work with the timing on new courts at Fremont?
We may have a gap at this point. We're thinking about taking out the courts in January, February for A R C.
Are the amenities for the tennis players sufficient at Fremont?
Yeah.
I mean, as we start to put a focus there, is there enough-
We've talked to the concessionaire.
Shade and sitting areas and staging and all that other?
I think there is.
How about parking?
Can we go back to that area?
There's adequate parking back there. Here's the parking here. So there's parking here, and there's also parking over here. So there's adequate parking for the tennis use over here.
For now, but as you expand that, you're going to put more people in there, and it may impact the neighborhood. So, and you may want to take a look at that. I mean, this is no longer a neighborhood park anymore. As you're expanding the use of it, it's becoming more of a tennis area. So people who went to A R C were going to drive down in here, they have to find a place to park to use the facility.
One comment that the concessionaire and the club that had paid there, played there in the past, that they would like to have a center court for tournaments. And the genuine center court being one that as the rounds of tennis proceeded, you got down to the final games, and they were, of course, exciting games, and your center court would usually be one that would have bleachers on either side of it. So it was slightly separated from the other courts and allowed you to really have the final game. And if there was, and this was the location that was always considered for, because they are the better courts and they do have nice amenities, and they actually have some level of parking, and that could be a consideration on this location, too, if it was ever worked out. That's what the tennis community at least has historically wanted, was the center court.
And I'll check with the E I R, I think, for, the A R C actually addresses moving two courts over to Fremont, and I'll see if there's a parking impact in that E I R.
George, is the, are the rose gardens still utilized?
They're not at this point. I know we want to do something with the rose gardens.
If there were ever to be a center court.
It would be right here. Yeah, we may want to locate it here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr.?
So going to be, I mean, George, will you be coming back with information as to being able to do just a center court with bleachers and that sort of thing?
We can, it's been an interest, we can certainly bring you back something like that.
If, if we're indeed going to move in a direction that pretty much makes Fremont our, sort of a tennis center, that might be a great thing. I know I played extensively at Fremont for years and years and years. Fremont and others, well, it's about every facility in the city, tennis facility in the city, but in those days, Fremont was almost considered the tennis center for the city anyway, but that would enable tournaments to really have a nice, a nice place to actually exist. That would be great.
Then we can come back with some concepts.
Well, frankly, as we proceed with the two courts, we should probably look at how that might be accommodated with a different design. Might take a few more resources, but accomplish the center court concept.
Maybe locating it in here somewhere with bleachers instead of out here.
You could stay completely away from the other amenities and instead, maybe a few more dollars on the current nine-hundred thousand, but meet the two court, additional two court requirement and do it in a center court configuration.
And you can plant the roses somewhere else. I mean, some of those roses are pretty old, and they need to be removed and replaced, so you could just have a different rose garden somewhere else.
We'll ask the designer to take a look at something in here.
And does the term center court merely, I mean, it's not necessarily its geographic location. I think it implies a greater sense of amenities, stadium and bleachers and things like that.
Now, to tell you, bleachers aren't cheap either, just depends on what type, so we'll come back with some of the costs as well.
Well, some center courts I've seen are actually sunken. I mean, they're below grade, and so the bleachers take advantage of the grading. Okay, we'll bring you back some concepts. For Mr. Quintero's benefit, Frank, we backed up a little bit, we came back to what last week we returned, the A R C replacement tennis courts project. And I noted for the council that in my discussions with Dr. Escalante, we agreed that the proceeding with the high school courts, that we probably wouldn't be in agreement on business terms and the timeframe that we need to proceed with replacement courts, and that we were better off devoting our energies and our focus on the Columbus School soccer field and not get diverted off into the issue of the tennis courts, the high school. So they were comfortable with us proceeding with different options, other options, the high school courts. And so George was reviewing the original plans we had for replacement of two courts at the Fremont Park.
Okay.
If the council's comfortable, that's the direction, then we'll proceed. That then takes us to the library projects component, a lot of which you've already talked about. We really shouldn't take up the northwest discussion. Is there anything more you want to say about the balance of projects, Nancy, full branch library, central library, equipment relocation, and the likes?
I think we've been through them. I'm happy to answer any questions that council might have about those projects.
How about a brief summary, Nancy, anyway?
Okay, well, one second. We've talked about the brand library, art and art center renovation, and the space utilization project there. We have about 4.7 million allocated to the project, and it's going to take us a bit more to sort of finish out that project. The funding that we have will cover a full seismic retrofit of both the structures up there, the historic 1905 building, as well as the 1969 addition.
And that was our mid-level, you had several series of renovations, and that, what we voted on last month was, wasn't the top, but it was certainly steps above the bare minimum seismic retrofit.
It was, it was pretty much the minimum. It covers the seismic, the mechanical, electrical, and the plumbing, and the A D A upgrades.
I thought we were more towards the middle than towards the bottom.
Yeah, we're not at the point where we're really touching the public areas, we're just making sure the building is compliant and sort of doesn't fall down in an earthquake and that kind of thing.
But there was some interest about, as you said, reworking the inside so it was better-
Configure.
Configuration. Is that going to happen in this one or not?
Not where it's currently funded. We would like to be able to, for example, we have three, at least three public service points in the building because of the way the historic building is configured. We'd like to be able to sort of centralize that, because we feel it'll provide better service and will probably provide some economies, you know.
Also, you reduce your personnel on there. And that's what you mentioned last time, and I think there was some interest on behalf of this council to move in that direction, but I wanted to know what happened to that. Because all I see in here is a 2.7 million, 2.7 million dollars for future, I guess, to be determined.
That's the unfunded portion at this point?
Is that part of that?
Yes.
That's coupled with the 3.7 million that's already existing, to bring it up to the 4.6, right?
There, yes, there's the three point, almost 3.8 that was there previously, and then council approved 900,000 recently, so the total-
So we've got 4.6.
Yeah, 4.6, 4.7.
And over the course of the eight years of the 10-year plan, you'd add an additional 2.7 million dollars to it.
Correct.
So you have 7, 7.4 so million dollars to work with.
Okay, so when is that coming to play?
It's sort of on the list right now for council to decide.
So, but you had given us a breakdown of what that space utilization was going to cost, because part of this is space utilization, part of it is the historic grounds, and part of it is historic restoration of the inside, the fireplace, and so on and so forth, that's being covered now.
Yeah, let me run through the costs that I have. So, to, the A D A upgrades that are in the 4.7 million that are approved already will not, will not cover, for example, an elevator. There's some thought that we may need to think about an elevator to get folks in wheelchairs up into, up into the library. So the additional funds, 400,000 approximately, would provide for A D A access, including an elevator excavation. And we've talked about having a centralized entry with the park studio down below, so we could choose to do that. $125,000 for painting, miscellaneous repairs, you know, and it costs a little bit more because we have to be sensitive to the historic elements there. $350,000 for the roof, and about $975,000 to really upgrade the interior, removing some of the partitions, rearranging the space, centralizing the service desk. You know, it needs carpet, it needs paint, it needs furniture, we need to reconfigure the space, there's a lot of limitations up there. The remainder of the cost is really the design, project management, contractor fees, you know, all those kinds of things that add up.
So the roof is not being touched under the 4.6 million?
It's not in the 4.6 million. I have a sense that we'll probably have to touch the roof.
When was the last time you did the roof?
The roof was done in 1996, and my understanding is that it has a 15-year life, so we're-
Built-up roof?
I'm sorry?
It's a built-up roof?
That I couldn't answer.
Yeah, it's a built-up roof, so, it's not, okay.
Nancy Nelson.
Right.
Mr. Draymond, what is the, we're talking about touching the roof, not touching the roof, what's the condition of the roof?
I think it's fair right now. We've had a few incidents where we've had some leaks and things like that, but I don't know if-
In other words, I'm wondering, maybe Steve, what I'm wondering is, is this something, does it need a new roof, Steve? That's what I guess.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at this time, it doesn't, but as Nancy indicated, it has a 15-year life. What we were most concerned about was the potential when we get in there and start doing the seismic, that we may get into the joists, members of the, of the, of the, of the structure, and that could have us penetrating the roof, which would then necessitate that we go back in and redo the roof.
All right, and so as-
I would definitely recommend-
Is your A C on the roof?
I would, yes, there's several penetrations on the roof, but I would tell you this, if you're asking my opinion, I would not let it go beyond that 15-year life.
What are we looking at cost-wise again, with regard to?
300,000.
You're sorry?
300,000.
Was estimated at 350,000 dollars.
Mr. Mayor? I would strongly recommend, as we do the repair, you're going to have to have the A C and all that stuff, they're going to lift all the stuff off the roof, they're going to put new stuff in, you've got to have pads and all the stuff. That would be the best time to do the roof. It'd be crazy for us to do all this retro with, and then you have leaks, because it will have leaks, and maybe you should use a torch-down material instead of a built-up roof. Then you have a 50-year roof, and the price difference is not that much anymore, because asphalt has gone up so high, and torch-down is almost there.
Right, that's the, the little larger price tag is a completely new build with modern, using modern-
And that would be the best thing for you to do, you put your new pads in, because I know when you go to do your retrofits, they're going to ask you to make the diaphragm, connect to that, and it's going to be almost impossible for you to do it from underneath, you have to tear out all the plaster, it's a lot cheaper to do it from the top, and hook up all your joists and everything else. So, that would be what I think, if you're going to do that, do this as part of it, that's-
Mr. Starbury?
Steve, what's the estimated timing on all of the work under, I'll call it the phase one?
I don't know that we actually put a schedule together, we were thinking somewhere in the neighborhood of 12 to 18 months, once we get started.
So we're into '08, '09? Okay. Because we have 500,000 in '09, '10.
Yeah, this'll take, this'll span multiple years.
Yeah.
And we can also phase it that way, if that's the intention, from a financial standpoint.
Our roof is generally going to go in last.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You're going to put that thing last.
Because again, there's still some question marks about exactly what we need to do up in that attic area, I'll call it, as far as the seismic.
My point is, in the 10-year timeframe, I'm not sure the numbers need to change here if we- if we find out we need to address the roof. In the early years, we've got $500,000 in '09, '10 budgeted here.
What's that going to be used for?
Well, it was going toward the subsequent phases of the library, the additional improvements.
Okay, so you could use maybe 350 added at one to do your roof.
And then in subsequent years, we're back looking again at these projects and whether or not we should be allocating additional resources and/or making changes in other areas.
Mr. Drayman. This is for Nancy. Slightly off the roof subject for a minute. Let's jump off the roof. What is the square footage of the gallery area itself?
The gallery itself? I'm going to turn to Ms. Clary for that one. She's our resident expert.
Hi. I think the gallery's about 5,000 square feet.
About 5,000 square feet. And most all of that is, excuse me, most all of that is displaced space or exhibit space?
Yeah, there are two galleries and, yeah, it's all displaced space.
Okay.
Just to give you an idea, the mansion part of it, the 1905 part of it is 5,000 square feet and then the new part of it that's library is 21,000 square feet.
And then the gallery itself, the exhibit space is about 5,000?
Right.
And the recital area?
Yeah, let's see. I think that was about 1,800.
Okay, thank you.
I'm testing my memory though, so I might not be exact.
I have one last question, Mr. Mayor. Not to get into the political too far, but it's a question I just, I keep getting asked. The flyer that's been going around talking about save Brand Library, other than normal maintenance and seismic issues, which we are, are and this council is and has been fully intending to look at, what exactly are we saving?
I couldn't tell you, Councilmember Drayman.
Please take a minute to join in the effort to save, help save our most valued historic landmark, Brand Library. And I'm just not, and I'm getting calls from the Historical Society, Glendale Historical Society and other preservation groups as well as homeowners associations and neighbors saying, what exactly are we talking about? And I don't have an answer for them because I don't know. And so I'm curious.
If I can, I think the correct answer is, of course, we can't account for what somebody's put in a brochure, but the lion's share, vast majority of the resources you are allocating, which is now over 10 years, upwards of $8 million, would be called preservation money. It's not significantly changing the operations of the library. It's just making sure that Brand Library continues to be in existence and weather earthquakes and be maintained appropriately. Does not significantly expand services there, but is devoted almost entirely to preservation of Brand Library, right?
Yeah.
And would do that.
But I think it's clear that, I mean, there's no wrecking ball that's hanging over it.
Absolutely not.
But clearly, Nancy, we've heard your presentations. You certainly could use a lot more money towards improving and maintaining. We're giving you just a bare bones budget at this point.
Right.
Mr. Giuseppe and Mr. Quintero.
For Mr. Drayman's information and some of the people out there, let me explain one thing. I think part of the reason that there is a certain amount of fear in the community is that there was $6 million originally in the budget and our previous colleagues took that $6 million out and put it in Pacific Edison. That's why Brand Library did not get the renovation that it was supposed to get about 10 years ago and it took about six or seven years or if not 10 years to accumulate that much money. So that's what the whole theory is, that this $4.6 million while it's here, there's no guarantees that somewhere down the line, this money doesn't get pulled out of here because some other project comes up somewhere else and it's gone. The other question that it's been asked, and I was surprised to find that, is that the Brand Library, even though it's considered to be a historic resource, it's not registered. Is that correct?
It's on the local register, but not on the national register.
Local, is it on the state registry?
I don't believe so.
Okay, what does it take for us to put that on there?
I'm certainly not an expert in these things. There's a process that you go through to evaluate.
Is there any way that the city can go to the Historic Preservation Commission and ask them to do that? I find it very interesting that this building, that half the town is named after and started, the original person who started it, that house is not on the state registry and we have other buildings that are less significant that are state registry. Can an individual go out there and submit a petition?
Yes, is the answer. Mr. Giuseppe, and I'm probably far more knowledgeable about this than you may realize. Yes, as I mentioned, any citizen can ask, can apply to have any building, doesn't require a public agency to place a property or even a district on the state registry. You'll recall that about a year and a half ago, a group of residents and merchants and business people were down here talking about the Montreux Shopping Park as a district being put on the state registry. I mean, anybody can request, certainly a city can, a state agency or municipal agency and that's probably even better. But again, I just want to come back to the thing. I'm well aware of the money that went to Pacific Edison, but when you talk about normal maintenance, upgrades for ADA, when you talk about as time goes by on an older building, looking at the things you need to do to preserve it and so on, is a different story than saying save the library, which is clearly indicates that there's something in jeopardy here.
And it's called earthquake.
Yeah, and that's why we voted to take care of that, isn't it, Mr. Giuseppe? That's exactly why we opted to do, as a majority, I think, five to none opted to do that. So that's why I don't quite get this and I think that is the confusion in the community. And I appreciate the information.
One other question I had on the historic nature issue, Mr. Starbird. If we, if someone files for the historic designation, would the historic designation of this building make our work easier or harder to do?
Well, again, you're probably asking the wrong person, but I think important here is that if the city council is interested in considering moving forward of the process to place on the national registry, we should bring you back a report that evaluates all of those issues. What are the implications to our operations? What are the implications to our future use of the building? It can sound very good to say, let's protect it and let's put it on the national registry. On the other hand, you will likely bear some burdens and limitations on your future use of the building by doing that. Not that we wouldn't always be sensitive to the historical nature of the building and everything we do, but I think at this point, if the council has an interest in exploring that, we should bring you back a full report from those people who know the implications and let you give us direction.
You have to follow SHPO requirements if it's there.
I think Mr. Starbird categorized it the best is it poses some limitations on, reduces your flexibility in some of the things you can do. But, you know, we have other buildings that aren't registered that we've always been sensitive to. But they might be things you would want to do anyway. So the likelihood is, given the nature of the Brand Library and its significance in the community, to think that you'd ever take steps that would be contrary to that is hard to conceive. So in which case, putting on a registry may not have any effect at all. But there will be limitations, but they might be limitations you would impose anyway on yourselves.
Correct. Let me go to Mr. Quintero and then Mr. Drayman.
Yeah, in regards to the flyer, I think the term the most appropriate is bait and switch. Obviously, that went out to numerous households and it had no basis in reality in terms of the organization that put it together. But I was actually at the Brand Library last week. I had some out-of-town visitors and we kind of walked around the complex. And let me say, it's in pretty good shape. I mean, it's not falling apart by any means. I'm kind of impressed that it's pretty well still. Everything I think is well under control. I just think we need to spend the money just to get it done, the retrofit and whatever other upgrades we need to do. But I was, you know, like I say, impressed with the condition of the library and just the overall building. I thought it looked quite good.
While we're talking about the historic designation, I'm not, I don't have much experience in that. I'm not sure what it means, but as an example, were it to be designated a state historical, on the state historical registry 50 years ago, would we have been able to build the studios down underneath? I mean, I don't know. Would that make state funds available to us through grants and preservation? I don't know. I mean, these are things that, as a layman in historical preservation, I would like to hear about, not just, and I'm not sure this is the forum, but, and not just as it pertains to Brand Library, but as, just as a general, in the general course of our dealings and then budgets and all that other stuff.
So, Mr. Mayor, are you suggesting that maybe there should be a request to discuss this issue on agenda? Because if it is, then I would like to place that on the agenda so we could discuss all the ramifications and what it goes to go through for historic preservation of this...
And Mr. Drayman. Well, I am absolutely for having further discussions about the issue of placing this on the element, but I also just want to point out that the downstream consequences of this are something that definitely needs to be looked at. And your question is the correct one, in my estimation, Mr. Mayor, because that is exactly the kind of downstream consequence you want to look at. You may have been able to put a gallery there had it been, had a historic designation, but how it could be built, what kind of design, in what way, in what manner it interfaces with the existing historic structure would all be based on historic considerations that were not part of the discussion, were not mandated as part of the discussion at the time. So you have a facility there that's also surrounded by recreational use and all sorts of things. So you definitely want to get some information, but I don't think it's something that simply our immediate staff may be able to answer. So we may be looking at a little broader research than just saying, hey, what do you think? You may need some input from those who actually evaluate historic properties or potential historic properties.
Well, we have a staff member at the planning that we hired from, I think it was L.A. Conservancy, who is in historic preservation.
Jay?
He's an expert. So use him and so we can...
Mr. Starbird, what do you think?
Well, Mr. Mayor, the note I made myself was to prepare, have the staff prepare a report on the implications and the process. I think what's important, given the door hanger that went out by somebody that we don't know who it was, merely discussing the topic and preparing a report doesn't somehow imply that the brand is being threatened because it couldn't be further from the truth. The brand isn't being threatened, to the contrary. The council has always been sensitive to the historic nature of the brand and this budget goes a long way in addressing at least the necessary underpinnings to ensure the brand continues to be preserved.
Why don't we put that on the agenda, Jim?
We'll prepare a report and have staff begin to work on it.
Because we deal with it during redevelopment issues and both the upside, the downside, funding restrictions, grants, the whole deal.
I think you did in recent, in my time here, you had that kind of conversation, I think about the T House. I think the T House was designated, if I recall, wasn't it?
T House was before my time.
Yeah, I thought, in my time here, I think we did move to the process to designate the T House, so...
Mr. McDonny is saying yes.
You have other facilities too, like the Alex Theater and...
It arises often, so it's a process we're familiar with. We'll do an occasional report.
I probably know the least of anyone, I'm sure. Okay.
Okay, moving on. We've talked about the equipment relocation at the Central Library. Just to review, maybe I'll bring up... As council is aware, the Americana on Brand will have a pass-through. So at least at this time, it was called New Street as being built as part of the Americana. It will come across Brand, cut through the sort of Rite Aid building that's on the, I guess it's east side of Brand and then it will lead folks into the sort of Central Library, Central Park complex. Currently, this pass-through is bumping into the library's equipment building, which generally houses our HVAC system. So we've worked with Public Works and we're proposing that at the time at which, you know, New Street is at or near completion, that we remove this building and we either underground the equipment that's located in there or we place it perhaps to the south of the Central Library so that we can, you know, clean up the pass-through some there. So the funding that's in for the equipment relocation is in the year at which we think that the pass-through will be complete. Continuing on with the Central Library, you know, the entrance to the Central Library is on the east side of the building currently. It's sort of a subdued entrance and what's happened over time is that development really has happened to the north of the library and it's slated to happen more to the south of the library with Central Park and the A R C and also to the west. So we are proposing the possibility of adding an entrance to the north of the library. Currently, patrons can park in the lot that's around the library, but frequently that lot is full, so they will park in the marketplace parking lot. So the thought is that perhaps this will make access to the library a bit easier for patrons. We are also talking about the potential of an entrance to the south of the library so that people who are in the library can flow out into the Central Park A R C area and vice versa. We're sort of thinking of it as, you know, kind of a cross-hatching of development here. So folks can come down Maryland, come through the library and down into Central Park and A R C or they can come from the Americana across New Street, through the pass-through and into the Central Library or the Central Park area. So what you'll see is funding that's in two different years and the first year would add an entrance to the north and then the second year would add an entrance to the south of the library.
And if I recall your previous discussion of this, the conclusional, I think there wasn't necessarily unanimity. I think the consensus was you wouldn't mind seeing some architectural concepts as to how this might work.
Yeah, and we're happy to bring that forward. Obviously, moving the entrances for the library would have some implications on service as well, but I think that's a good thing. There's some things that we need to do with our service model at the Central Library anyways and I think this would be a prime opportunity to sort of reorient those as well.
And so you still have the east entrance available?
Yeah, we're currently thinking we would...
So you have three entrances?
We would continue to have the east entrance at least until the whole plan is complete.
And then that will be closed.
Maybe, maybe not. We haven't made that decision. ADA access is very easy from...
You just keep in mind your security issues.
Yeah, absolutely.
It could become, for example, it could become an outdoor seating area that's secure, but within the library but outdoors. If the parking were to go away someday in the distant future, then you could have, you could have an area outside the library that would still be secure where people couldn't remove books, but they could be outdoors. So it lends a lot of opportunities. The likelihood is, you're talking a number of years on the horizon. This isn't something that comes together very quickly, but it does begin to give you lots of opportunities for Central Library and its use.
And at some point, my understanding is that parking lot is going to be gone?
This one here?
No, 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 the one on the west.
Oh, the alley, the alley parking.
Yeah.
Yes.
You know, at one point, when there is a parking lot underneath the park, then all that will become green. And the one on top will become green and the other parking lot will become green. So this way, the amount of green that is there will be increased.
I mean, I'm certainly not the expert to speak on this.
That's not going to be easy to do because you have commercial structures.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Back up to that.
I understand that.
That would be the ideal, but I don't know how you're going to be able to work that out.
Well, no, you have an alley.
Right.
You have an alley and in that parking structure, if that was green, has no bearing whatsoever on your commercial structures. You've got a 20-foot alley, you can go both ways.
I know you have an alley and then you have a parking. I'm just saying that that alley... alley for sure will always have to remain open, because you have three or four sizable structures.
Yeah, yeah. I wasn't talking about the alley. I was just talking about the parking.
A lot, a lot of the future vision for this area depends on what happens with the private development component in the years ahead. What happens with the Masonic Temple and the Di Pietro properties that are essentially south of the, of the passageway. We have one building in there, and then what happens in the distant future with the properties to the north? All of that should be planned with the thought in mind that when something does happen, and it could be a long ways out, that there is a bit of a master plan is what we'd like to see accomplished into there. I think the intent is to see more green space, less asphalt, more green space, more passages through there for pedestrians, and a greater linkage with the park, and the library, and the Adult Recreation Center, and Brand Boulevard, and, and the areas to the north, so.
Well, my understanding was that was the main intent. That's why we put the library, I mean, the Adult Recreation.
That's right.
Where we put it.
That's right.
In that corner, it actually allows more open space in the Central Park, actually be more than what it is there now.
Exactly.
So.
Okay.
The only other items that are directly related to the library is, we've talked about a full branch library in the Adams Square area. Council is aware we are leasing the space that this, that the storefront is in. It's a long-term lease, but at some point we'll have to start thinking about what we're going to do down in that area of town. So, in the out-years, we've placed $300,000 to start thinking about some design.
What's happening there, by the way? They took all the storefronts out and it's been sitting there, working?
Yeah, yeah. The project's moving forward. It's going well. We've had a few hiccups there. The storefronts, the, it's a long story. The contractor wasn't sure they could provide storefronts that would provide safe, safety, replace them one-for-one with, with glass that would provide safety, but we also have to be in keeping with the historic nature of the building. So, we had a little back and forth, having to do with the windows that were proposed and making sure that they are in keeping with the historic nature of the building, but that has now been resolved, and, you know, things are moving forward. And then, I don't know if we want to talk about Central Park face two. That's sort of, we lumped the Central Library, Central Park things together, but.
Yeah, what we noted before was the eventual upgrade of Central Park and what it becomes long-term really depends on what happens with the Brand frontage and, and how we can take advantage of, of what happens there. Eventually, what we foresee is underground parking that would meet the parking needs in the area, and eventual expansion of the whole Central Park concept, in conjunction with what happens along the Brand Boulevard frontage, probably the first of which is development south of the, the passageway, the Di Pietro property, Masonic Temple, and all of that. So, within this timeframe, we haven't plugged in any specific dollars. Likelihood is, that becomes a redevelopment project at some time in the future, but we haven't plugged in anything specifically for it.
Do we, do we own any more properties besides the, the passageway?
No, we don't, no. Well, the, we own the, Phil, help me here. Our properties are just the south of the passageway, or just the north of the passageway? I forget.
We own the two properties that, that become the passageway.
Okay.
It's where Rite Aid and, and the Great Carpet Company are right now.
Okay, so south of it is owned?
It's not, it's not just the yellow line then, is it? It's wider than the yellow line that's shown on here.
Here's the Masonic Temple. This is a retail building. These two are owned by the Di Pietros. We own this building and this building here. This is then the, the arcade, the Royal Palace, and then the light store.
Okay.
So, we own this property in here.
So, the concept is the passageway becomes something considerably more than the yellow line?
That's right.
Much wider area opening up underneath.
I mean, you, you could do, it's open to a whole host, and we'd like to go to the design studio and, and planning to talk about, is, is this building a viable commercial building that could open up on the passageway and become an asset to the passageway, or do we want to take the whole hundred feet and create a grand passageway? That's something that we'd like to design with the design studio in planning.
But we don't own that building.
We own both of these.
We own that one.
We own all of this right here.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
All right.
I think that takes us through the library component. On to the general, what we call the general government projects, the old police building reuse. Steve, you want to note what we provided for here?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, this is just updating you on, on what I've talked to you about before. We have somebody that's designing or doing some space analysis for us with the concept of moving, just potentially moving into this space, community development and housing, parks, in, in consideration of the potential for, for off-site, being health services potentially moving in there as well. And we also, as you know, have a temporary setup in the back of our Civic Center parking structure where facilities maintenance is. So, it's a small, small bit of space, but also incorporating them in there as well. The design team we have working on, on it has slowed down a little bit. Unfortunately, the principal of the firm, who was consulting part-time with the city of Pasadena for the Rose Bowl, has now become the architect of the Rose Bowl. So, she is turning over the reins of her company to a, her partner, who's been involved in our project as well. So, it, it has slowed down a little bit. We should be getting a preliminary report very soon, hopefully by mid to end of November. And then, at that point, we can begin to look at, what does that do? What does it entail for us to move it in? Again, as I've mentioned to you before, our marching orders were, we want to try to use the existing space in its current condition as best we can. Little or no major improvements, taking the operations as they are and being able to fit them into the existing layouts. Obviously, we have some ADA issues. We've got some, some old age issues, if you will, in the HVAC and the lighting, which we're also addressing those and working with Glendale Water and Power on the potential to, to use some public benefit charge monies to improve the energy efficiency of the building in those areas as well. So, we continue to forge ahead there. And like I said, hopefully I get this preliminary space design that we can bring back, show you, and begin to put some dollar amounts to that, so that you, you can get a, get a concept or an idea of what, what it's going to take. Again, trying to limit the amount of hard construction, going with systems furniture, open spaces, not a whole lot outside of what would be ADA improvements, upgrades. If you gentlemen have been through there, it's, it's a, it's a good building. It's a solid building. The bathrooms actually have a very unique character to them, from the fixtures to the tile, and we'd like to, to preserve that as much as we can.
Just want to say, Mr. Zern, you're going to be at the very forefront of the whole mid-century movement here in Southern California.
Which is exactly where Mr. Zern wants to be.
Expecting articles in all the magazines about your forward-looking.
Mr. Mid-century.
Steve, do you know, I'm assuming that you're going to replace carpets and all this stuff?
Oh, absolutely.
So, you have $393,000 in your account, out of that half a million originally. Do you think you will be able to do all this in that amount, or you need more?
My, my guess, Mr. Seifian, is we're going to need more.
Okay, so you're going to come back?
That's what, that's what. I just want to get a good number for you guys to, to.
Or a cleaner.
For you gentlemen to get your arms around.
But we have plugged in a ballpark. That's the one and a quarter million in each year of '08, '09, '10. You know, we had estimates earlier that.
Is that in addition to the 1.5?
No, I think in the 1.5, we're thinking we may be able to tap into some PBC money for upgrading AC and heating. I don't know if that's within, I think that's within the, the two and a half million, or is that?
Right, I think that, did we make the notation on there wrong?
Right.
The GWP.
Yeah, so we have two and a half million here. We're thinking upwards of a half of that. We might be able to tap into PBC money.
Okay, so you need another million.
Right, so, so we plugged in a million and a quarter in '08, '09, and another million and a quarter in, in '10. For two and a half million, we're thinking we can reduce that, that a little bit, or if we can tap into the PBC money for some of the AC and heating. But a lot of that will depend on what Steve's able to come back with. We've seen numbers on the other side of $5 million, and our point is, you know, the building, the building was inhabited when the police moved out of it. They've been making use of it for a long time. This just shouldn't be a five to 10 million dollar project to begin to use it essentially as it is, and that may mean not converting some of the areas, the jails and the basement. We're not anticipating tearing out the old jail within this budget, are we, Steve?
No, we're looking at potentially that as storage. Storage is at a premium with the, with the city. So, trying to keep the jail in its current condition, and at the same time utilizing it for storage. We did talk about the potential for what was the day room for the trustees, the kitchen. That area could potentially be a community meeting room for, for CD&amp;H, and something could, could evolve out of there. But again, that's, that's thinking ahead a little bit more. But again, right, Mr. Starbuck, as you said, trying to keep it in its current condition as much as we can to.
Constrain the costs.
It's, and we've maintained it. We've continued. The HVAC system, I think everybody knows, is, is pretty much.
Is it chiller system, or?
Chiller. The chiller, chiller units are where we have the biggest issue, and I'm anticipating to get a proposal from, from our consulting engineer very, very shortly on what it would take to fix that. Boiler unit appears to be in pretty fair shape, so depending on, on the extent of the ducting work and, and other mechanical equipment, mixing boxes and so forth, this may not be as big a dollar item fix as, as we had anticipated.
Good.
And the lighting, again. Lighting is a, from a public benefit charge standpoint, a very big bang-for-your-buck type of a conversion. You're all aware, you gentlemen are aware, we've, we've done it throughout the city. It's relatively inexpensive, and it's where you get your biggest energy consumption, reduction in consumption and savings.
And upgrades?
Absolutely, absolutely. You take the, the old energy inefficient equipment and replace it with new stuff, and you're going to get, you're going to see an energy savings right off the bat. We believe that the core infrastructure, plumbing and electrical, are in pretty good shape. It's old, but we've done a lot of work on it over the years. We've done a lot of replacing the plumbing systems and new piping and things like that, so we think it's.
You got copper throughout?
No, we do not, Mr. Seifian. We have it in, in certain locations, but not throughout.
Steve, while you're there, there's nothing here, but we have City Hall renovation as the next item. Note what we have included so far in terms of the City Hall improvements.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, essentially what the council's approved to this point was for us, and let's take this chamber, for instance, is really where the key was. So, we were going to upgrade the carpeting in this chamber, replace the ceiling tiles. Now, this is an antiquated system that we can't get replacement for, and change the seating out, upgrade the seating. Subsequent to that, there was some questions about, you know, we want to make sure that this is an ADA compliant chamber. Was there an ability for us to make some, some subtle changes in the dais and so forth, in the layout that would improve, whether it was the AV system, capacity, that kind of thing. So, we're also looking at, at that as well.
But we don't have.
Very, very cosmetic, very, very basic upgrades to, to this particular chamber.
And improvement of the lobby area, stairwell, carpeting, wall covering there. That's within the current budget?
Correct. The lobby was going to look at wall coverings and carpet, and.
How about the elevator to be gurney-approved?
We weren't going to look at the elevator. We're going to look at ADA-related issues, but, but as I had mentioned before, we shifted those all to the major survey that we're doing throughout the city, and that's nearly complete, so that'll be.
So, we're not doing the ADA for the bathrooms?
We are, we are looking at that within the ADA survey. The, the rest of the ADA work is mostly access points into and out of the building and circulation within. The ADA upgrades to the bathrooms are going to be significant undertakings that could actually, excuse me, entail cutting into the building or moving into current office spaces, all covered under the ADA survey.
Yeah, and you recall, back under the ADA upgrades project, we have over ten years, seven and three-quarter million dollars over the ten years, smaller amounts in the early years, larger amounts in the later years. This kind of work could come out of this money, as we identify. We noted that in addition to this general fund CIP, each of the enterprise funds and operating funds would also be addressing their ADA components, either as they do projects or on their future budgets as well. So, this is not the sole money available for ADA upgrades, but for example, restrooms in City Hall, they could be within those early years of the ADA upgrades.
And again, one of the, the keys to that may be what we end up relocating to the previous police building, and what frees us up in this building and allows us possibly to expand the bathrooms and how we can coordinate that. We also talked, as you may recall, about the balcony that's outside and the ability to potentially move that balcony out, so it actually lines up with the doorway, as opposed to the jog that you now have on both sides.
Only thing that I would recommend that you keep in mind is the charter is very specific as where the city council can make decisions.
Oh, absolutely.
And so, you know, so keep that in mind as you talk about moving us around, you know.
Well, no, no, we, none of this, none of this proposal is moving the city council. In fact, there isn't money in the budget for sort of these broader concepts. For example, the concept of widening the mezzanine, that's not provided for here.
No, no.
That's, the budget Steve has and was provided for is really cosmetic, and through the ADA budget, addressing some of the ADA issues, but the broader, frankly, completely changing out this council chambers, reorienting the building, we've actually talked about, maybe you can blow out part of this wall, take the legal area, make the council chambers larger. None of that's provided for here, because that's considerable dollars.
Correct.
So, in this, in this ten-year timeframe, that's not part of the vision.
And I have kept the city attorney very much in the loop to make sure that I, that as we plan these, whether they're just basic cosmetic upgrades, or we decide to go a little bit further, that that's, we keep in mind where the council needs to meet and where decisions need to be made.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Well, I've asked Mr. McFaul to touch on these, these next three that have to do with document management and communications. Bob?
The, the first one, the citywide document management system, actually for a number of years now, the city has been very aggressively engaged in imaging the vital documents of the, of the city. Actually, probably goes back about twenty years. The most recent major project has been in Public Works, where the Public Works documents, in essence, the building records, for an amount of about $950,000 total, have all been incorporated as a part of a image system in the citywide document management system, and strategically is being linked to the permitting system, all the, all of the address files as the entire system is set up. This proposal takes an existing $350,000 that council has already approved, and adds $100,000 to, to add the planning documents, the planning land files, into the same type of system and associated in a similar manner as the Public Works address and building files have done. You'll note on the far-right-hand column, there is a potential fee that could generate up to as much as $250,000 if, if an additional fee is added on to the planning and building fees. That as a, as a report and request would be coming to the city council as a separate item for your consideration, but for the time being, we would request an additional $100,000 to be added to the 350 to be able to complete this phase of the project. I think it's probably fair to say that in subsequent years, as we continue to evaluate the opportunities and the needs for land-related documents, that we would be coming back to council with subsequent requests to add additional documents to these. All of these in a system being built that ultimately we can go to a single address and be able to access all associated documents, whether they be legislative documents that the city council has taken action on, or just routine permit documents, but they will all be, all be linked together in a, in a common format.
Mr. Seifian?
I don't have a problem with that. The only thing that I think is important to think about is, as you go through this process of documenting all this information, that the information is documented accurately. We had a meeting at Glenox Elementary not too long ago about Glenox Boulevard, and after the, it was discovered, we made errors. We used the county GIS instead of using our own. But even with our own GIS, it's not as precise as some of our engineering documents, the paper documents they are. So, it does not give the planners enough information, so they have to craft some of their legislation with between three to five-foot variances. That's a huge difference, three foot for five foot. What I like to know is, is there any way to get some of that engineering documents that we have in the city? We've had them for many, many years, and some of them are almost ready to fall apart, because they're from 1920s and they're little books and around. Is there any way to get some of that data into our GIS? So, it's, they don't print out a piece of paper, and they take the little scale, and they scale it off and know what the measurement is, instead of actually having the actual measurement written in the GIS map, so he doesn't have to scale it off. I mean, it's a little bit more detailed. It 'd probably take a little bit more money, but if we do it slowly as we go through the process, as this GIS map. but if we do it slowly as we go through the process, as this G I S map, our G I S is completed, then the future generation will have very accurate data in their hands.
You've actually hit on the key point. The answer is yes to all of that, and it's also a point well, well taken. And there's really, the, this whole land information system is very complex and there are, as you could imagine, will be. And there's really, on the mapping side, there's really two components to it. One of them is the G I S system that is largely developed out of photo data and as you're referring to, it's interpretive data from a variety of, of sources. That's one. The other is the CAD system. Those are the extremely accurate drawings that are, that are done, that are actually often confused as being the G I S documents. And they're, they're actually a separate component and they're generated separately. But you do blend those two together as you have suggested, as it is, as the opportunity presents itself and, and as you're using to make the, the G I S as accurate as it could be. So we are extremely cognizant of the need to improve the accuracy and to continue to take those maps and to make the G I S system for planning purposes and purposes more accurate. And there's a whole separate effort that is underway to do that very-
And even if you don't, because there may be way too much information on what map, maybe there needs to be some kind of a, I don't know, subtitle or something put in the G I S for the planning as they use this, that this is not 100% accurate, you can go to such and such site and look at the CAD drawings if you want more specific. So this way you don't have to overlay everything, because I know what happens when you overlay a lot of stuff in the CAD design, there's so many lines you can't even see through it anymore.
That near-
So this way, you know, because when they look at this and they go, oh, this is what it is, but there's a little subnote somewhere that says, for more detailed information, go to such and such site.
Actually, on many of our, on, you're exactly right, and that's, that's a standard practice. And in fact, on many of our documents, that is exactly what we say, this is for reference information only. Consult with the planning department, consult with the engineering department for the precise information. But I'm not, honestly, I can't say I know how robust that declaration is, but that is, that is what we, what we attempt to do.
And that's, I think, something we need to, it's not about the public. I mean, the, the issue in here is our own workers, our own workers that need to get information because they base their staff reports, their decision makers for either planning department or whether for the planning commission or B Z A or design review or us based on some of these documents. And it would be important that they know where to go and what to get so they could give accurate information to the public.
The next item is wireless communication network, kind of commonly referred to as the, of the Wi-Fi system. The city council previously has considered a report from the Director of Information Services regarding engaging, the city of Glendale engaging in a citywide Wi-Fi network. At the time that the city council considered this a number of months ago, there is a, a direction back to go out and get public input into this and, and develop a more, a robust potential plan for a Wi-Fi network. The, this line item was to anticipate what the city's expenses would be in providing such a network. And during the time of just the last several months, the whole industry has changed around Wi-Fi networks. And in fact, you've undoubtedly read in papers and trade journals of many of these systems that have been installed with the thought that there would be sufficient subscription information to them that they would be self-supporting. That just simply hasn't been the case. And in many instances, the systems are being abandoned, projects that are underway are being curtailed. Shortly, Information Services is going to be coming back to the city council with a full report that has been prepared with the assistance of a consultant who is probably one of the more knowledgeable individuals about the current state of Wi-Fi in communities and use in city, city government. So at this point in time, we're not making a request for any additional funding, but recognizing based on the results of this report that there, if the city council made a decision that they wanted to pursue a, a Wi-Fi network, the cost is going to be a factor of how extensive the policy becomes to, to install the network. So at this, at this point in time, there is no specific request in it. And ultimately, ultimately, it may be a public policy decision that, that this, it really is no longer a viable option.
Is the consultant in-house?
No, no.
Where are we paying that consultant from?
We have funds-
Because there's zero in here everywhere.
Within the operating budget.
Within the operating budget of Information Services.
I S.
Right. And through, through other project funds.
Okay.
Then the last item is an item that we have discussed on a couple of locations. And essentially, this is what I refer to as the gap funding to complete the provision of the, the wireless communication system, in essence, the public safety, the radio communication system. We have for, we have set up an internal service fund that partially provided for the replacement of the, of the infrastructure and the actual radios themselves, and it provided for all of the myriad of associated costs to maintaining and operating the system. There is a gap between what has been set aside and what is actually needed on an ongoing long-term basis. The staggered amounts that are indicated in the, the proposed C I P here is reflective of what the immediate needs are and trying to balance available funding to what funding is needed to deal with some immediate issues in essence, public safety, public safety issues. It is likely that if approved, that these would not remain in the capital improvement program, but they really belong into the operating accounts as an internal service fund.
In the future, could you put down increased transfer to public safety wireless communication?
We, it is-
Because when you say wireless communication, it can mean a whole lot of things. So, you know, it could mean the BlackBerrys that we carry around and cell phones and everything else. So I, I want the public to know it's for the handheld radios, for ISIS and so on and so forth.
Right. It is primarily public safety, although there are obviously general government usages-
So other operations as well, from parks and rec to public works to G W P, they're also part of this system.
But they're using the, the same handsets? This is not BlackBerrys or anything else?
This isn't just, this isn't just handsets, this is the entire system. This is the infrastructure, the handhelds, everything.
Correct, right.
This is the entire system. So we don't differentiate between public safety and non-public safety, handhelds versus mobiles versus base stations. This is everything. This is the repeaters in the mountains, this is, this is the entire system. And, and my thought is in long-term, these really should be operational expenses, not capital expenses, because we invested the capital five years ago to build a brand-new system. This should really be operating expenses as, as we essentially consume these resources, but we don't have the capacity now within the general fund to absorb all of this. But I think over time, within this 10-year timeframe, we're gonna need to find a way to have the operating departments begin to carry the burden on these costs and not continue to look to our C I P for this. We just don't have the capacity currently to do that.
So what you're saying is park will carry their section-
Yes, yes.
Parks department and so on and so forth.
And now the enterprise funds are carrying their share, right?
Yes, correct, right.
So this is, this is essentially the burden that the general fund operates should be carrying, fire, police, parks, everybody else who uses radios that comes out of the general fund.
Non-enterprise portion of public works.
Yeah, the non-enterprise. So we need to find a way within the next 10-year timeframe to begin to reduce this burden on the C I P and shift this responsibility over to the operating budgets where it belongs.
And if you did that, let's take, let's take $1.7 million in 2009, how much of that will go to fire and how much of that will go to police, how much of that? It'd be interesting to see what the difference-
Probably the greatest component is, is to police.
Yeah, police and, police and fire is clearly the, the largest component.
Yeah.
The, the general government portion on it actually doesn't impact the, the backbone of it much. They literally ride on that, but they do have to, to have the handhelds, the actual radios themselves. But the majority of this would go to police and fire. While this is a very large, if you want to say nut to crack, this is the final amount. There's a substantial amount that has already been set aside and we have taken some period of time to really understand the full complexity of the system, how ISIS is going to impact the system and staff has worked, I'll say diligently, to really get down to the numbers of what are reasonable replacement cycles and which are complex themselves. Obviously, in a system such as this, different components have different replacement cycles, up to 20, 25 years for some components, and others just a few years. So this, this is the, the summary of, of a, of all of those different replacement cycles and operating needs to, to maintain this entire very complex wireless system.
So we have, we, we require 11 more million dollars to get this thing all done?
Overtaken.
And you said we had more money somewhere else?
We have already a, a, and within our operating accounts, we have money that is set up within a replacement.
Do you remember?
We currently transfer $750,000 out of the C I P to the wireless every year.
So in the same 10-year period, you'd have seven and a half million dollars?
Correct.
So seven and a half million and 11 million is what it takes to close the gap.
But my understanding was last time, when the gentleman gave us a report, that $750,000 barely pays for the maintenance of existing, whatever they have, so-
That's why-
That doesn't go for any of the replacement stuff. And we're gonna have to have all new handsets, we're gonna have to have-
And that's what this money does.
That's what this money does.
That's what this is gonna, this is gonna make us compliant with the set.
This closes the gap on all of those items. There would be, this provides for all, for the operating expenses and the replacement, the various replacement cycles.
Bob, is there any other way of structuring this differently than the way we currently are? Is it possible to go to an outside contractor that would provide us with the equipment, leasing the car instead of buying it, so to speak? Because the technology does change so often. We're making a huge investment in things that are gonna be obsolete, and this is gonna be a continuing expense for us, I mean-
This is, this is a, literally an organization-wide lifelong commitment to the infrastructure. In past times, unfortunately, we did not anticipate through a set-aside program the expense of the system. Now we're, we're just trying to be realistic, this is what it, what it, what is going to be, whether and-
Is there such a thing?
Steve, Steve Veronica would probably-
Also, the feds changed their model to-
Thank you, Mr. McFaul. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Steve Veronica, wireless administrator. We can lease, matter of fact, our original system was leased, but it was just another way of financing. We're still paying the full amount on it plus interest. Well, in, in original system, we actually managed to work out a zero-interest lease, but we're still paying for the equipment. It's just a different way to finance it. Nobody's gonna give you the equipment at the end of the lifespan, take it back because it's worthless at that point. The way technology has been progressing, radios we have today, 10 years from now are no longer gonna be useful to us, the handhelds and mobiles.
But even, even if we're using the same supplier and the same manufacturer, I mean, it may be worthless at the end of 10 years, but they've got their customer on the, you know, on the hook for the new equipment, for each new model as it comes out. It's not like we're shopping for different systems, we're their customer, but it's just a way of shifting the bonus of the-
Problem is, all we're doing is extending, we're still the same cost for the equipment, we're just extending it out over a number of years by leasing it. We're still paying the same thing.
What, what we try to do is instead of expecting, in, in like a lease of an automobile, where maybe you take it for the first three years and you give it back to the dealer, in this case, because of the issues that Steve has raised, unlikely anybody wants this equipment back at the end of three years. What we do is we move it down to the, from the safety departments to the non-safety departments and continue to filter the equipment down until, like an automobile, you, you know, the tires fall off of it, until literally it has absolutely no more useful value. So we move it off of the front line, which is the safety departments, into the front line, non-safety, and then continue to filter it down through the organization until we have completely consumed all the value out of it. And that's what we believe gets us the best, the best value out of the equipment.
They use it for parts.
For parts after that.
Frankly, Mr. Seifman, that's exactly what we do. We start cannibalizing those that are no longer serviceable.
The unknown at this point in time, but what the city is fully embracing is, as council has heard of, the Project 25 compliance. What potentially that will do is to create a more open architecture system that other providers could have equipment available to us that may be lower cost.
So increase competition.
Increase competition. We're, right now, as you know, from the, the standpoint of the really robust, reliable equipment, it's made by primarily one manufacturer. It is very possible that as Project 25 gains greater popularity, becomes more, more typical, other manufacturers can provide equipment, whether it be part of the infrastructure or the handhelds, that will work within a system that is no longer proprietary, so that we will have greater discretion in looking at, maybe in the police world where we're rugged, equipment is needed, we need one model and one type that has one price range, but in more, in other applications, we simply don't need that. And yet, even though it comes from a different manufacturer, it will be compatible, compatible with this new open architecture. That's how, what we're hoping to be able to achieve some savings, we're just, right now, it's premature to be able to know if that's actually going to happen or not. So the whole process of, we do not buy new equipment for all the departments as Mr. Starbird and Mr. Anken indicated, there is quite a hand-down system that takes place right now.
I bet the profit margins on these units are just incredible.
I guarantee it.
Yeah. I just wish there was some way we could, as municipalities, I mean, we're not talking about, you know, kids going out and buying their cell phones. I don't care what their profit margin is on that, but this is, you know, public safety issues and being current, I just wish there was more consideration in the pricing schedule for-
Well, as astonishing as it may be, looking at the cost of this equipment, we actually have enjoyed the Isis cities and brought-
Not mine.
Yes. It's true, it could be this phone, this one. We're working with the other Isis cities, we really have brought the, the cost of not just the subscriber units, but the backbone upgrades we've done down dramatically. And our, our Project 25 system upgrade, which is coming in a couple of years, is also included in this. So, you know, we've, we've planned this out over, actually out over 15 years to, so we could get to the next system replacement, but 10 years, of course, being the, the city's budgeting cycle. But we've, we've thought it through as, as deeply as we could, and I have to thank, really have to thank Scott Harmon for that, because he rode me and rode me and rode me to make sure this was, every dime was accounted for. And we, we've got a budget we can live with, and I'm, I'm very comfortable we can live with for 15 years, provided the additional funding is, is included.
And we, we have received federal assistance along the way in the past or the past few years. We will continue to seek that, particularly in situations where there is a, a regional need, and that seems to be where we can may have built our, our best case for getting federal assistance. We'll continue to seek such funding, and when we're successful, that'll offset some of these costs and we'll adjust accordingly when we're able to get that. So the police department, Ray Eady in particular, has been extremely aggressive and very successful in receiving such grants, whether it's grants or special legislation, and will continue to do that. And so when we can offset, we will, we just know we have to have a, an overall plan for the reliability, because now it is not only Glendale, it's Glendale, it is the growing Verdugo system and it's ISIS. There's a tremendous reliability from a public safety standpoint on how Glendale manages our system.
Did any of these numbers include the U W A C grants that we got and, and from the county fire?
In the 08, 09 budget year, we have, we have a grant for the, well, it's the M Gig, it's, it's the bridge that connects the consoles to the new switch.
$750,000, yeah.
Yes.
That's why it's zero here.
Those funds, those funds were included in here. Now, of course, for Glendale's portion, now that's been taken out.
Okay.
And, and I think in this first fiscal year-
So as we go through and we get more funding through U W A C and/or feds, we can take some of those things out?
It will offset this, exactly.
Whenever we have an offset, then we'll take that out.
And, and this brings me to the next question, which is, if this becomes a part of the general fund, would that jeopardize our ability to go to the federal government and ask for money? Because they would say this is part of your general operational, so why should we give you any money?
Actually, it'll be part of our, our, but all the users pay in some, so the effect will be the same.
Okay.
It is an astonishing cost. When you look at just the mass of a radio and thing, that's the similar price of a small car. That's a whole lot, lot, lot larger. There is just a-
We have the portables down to, they were, sorry, what am I doing? My apologies. When we were initially purchasing them, they were $4,900. Now, because of ISIS and the grinding on motorola, we're getting the encrypted portables for $4,600. Not a huge difference, but it's significant when you're working with a company that is so inflexible when it comes to pricing.
Okay. Thank you.
Keep grinding them down.
I will.
Yes, sir.
Anything we want to say about the MSB remodels, Steve? We're not providing funding here. We have the MSB first-floor permit center.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This was where Mr. Higani and I were going to take a look at the entire layout of the planning zoning and building and safety, building inspection, permit issuance operation. It's very cut up right now. It's not an efficient use of the space there. It's not the greatest space in the world for what we want to try to provide from a customer service standpoint, but I think that we can use it a lot better than we have been. And Mr. Higani's been very cooperative with us in looking at it from the entire one end to the other type of concept. We've come in, get our office layouts a little bit different than they are now, trying to maximize the customer service space, trying to get the flow so it's more customer-friendly. In other words, you don't have that feeling, even though you're on the same floor, that we are two separate entities, and you have to go out a door and into another door to talk to somebody in planning or building or whichever the case may be. So we want to try to get maybe a uniform counter. I know, Mr. Yusefian, you're smiling, you're going to say, "Like it was 21 years ago."
Our building's like a fashion, you know? If you hold a tie long enough, at one point it becomes fashionable again. So it's the same thing. We're going back to what it was before.
I remember-
Okay, whatever works.
That's how it was. But I think we can do a lot of things inside the office to make the flow a little bit better for not only the staff, but also for the users of the facility. So that was what our concept was here. Again, same interior design firm that we're utilizing for the previous police building was going to help us here, but it'll probably take us a little bit longer than we had hoped because they're pretty backed up at this point.
There is enough money in the MSB retrofit money to finish that project and have all the things in place, so when the building opens, you know, is there money to paint the handrails and stuff like that so it looks nice and clean, so it doesn't look all banged up from the construction?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Yusefian, the current project includes the complete restoration of that plaza level and the lobby level as well. So we'll come in there-
How about the staircases going up into-
Staircases going up on the north side, obviously, it's almost going to be brand-new as you eliminate the mezzanine and come into a completely new lobby. But we'll go through and make whatever repairs we need to, anything damaged in construction, dinged up or whatever the case may be, we'll have those-
And a new elevator? We're getting a new elevator?
We're using the same-
Box.
Box, but it's going to be new-
It's going to be hung.
New equipment, correct. Going to be hung instead of a basement-level plunger system.
And when do you anticipate that to be finished?
Well, I'm going to submit a note to Mr. Starbird that's going to take us a little longer than we had first anticipated. It was originally thought to be done June '08, but I think we'll be closer to the end of '08 when we get to that. There's been a number of issues that have arisen since we started to get into the base of the building, and as I've told Mr. Starbird, I would prefer to take our time when dealing with this kind of a project and make sure that we've got it right versus trying to rush to meet some deadline.
This is not a police building issue?
No.
Okay.
No, this is a remodel. When you open the walls, you begin to see what you're working with, and until you open the walls, you don't know what you're working with. So they're having to adjust as they uncover more and more in terms of the infrastructure and those four feet that that massive building sits on.
Okay.
Very difficult engineering.
Very difficult engineering. Want to make sure that we are crossing all the Ts and dotting all the Is on this one. So it takes us a little longer.
Feet are bigger than what we anticipated, huh?
Feet are, yeah, in some cases.
Feet aren't as big as we thought they were.
Yeah, in some cases, not as big as we had hoped.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, last point I'd like to make before we wrap up this morning is the last two boxes on the last page note where we stand relative to balancing the CIP with all of the projects that you've seen over the last several study sessions. And as you'll note, based on these projects and the initial funding sources and funding strategies that we identified, we are out of balance by anywhere between $46 million and $71 million over 10 years. I anticipated that would be the case. Remember, we encourage you, while keeping an eye on the resource side, let's talk about what the priorities are for projects. We now need to go back and, we, the staff, needs to go back and work on the resource side of the picture with some additional work on the project side. We need to factor in the implications of impact fees, the tax increment for parks and libraries, GRA bond issue. You have some preliminary numbers that were included in here, but we will work on some revised figures, looking at ways that some of these project costs can be reduced. You noted in many of the projects where we have potential funding sources, whether it was PBC or C, Community Development Housing money, we need to begin to really focus on some of those. And as a result, we'll need the next two or three weeks to really prepare some strategies on how we balance now this expenditure plan to be a balanced capital improvement program. And would expect to have that back to you in the next two to three weeks. Again, I noted earlier, when you start the process, this would be iterative in nature. That is, you go through, you take a look at where you end up, and then you've got to go back and do some more work to refine it, to eventually balance it. And that'll be our effort over the next couple of weeks to come back to you with a plan that will focus probably a little more on the resources side than on the project side. I want to thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank my colleagues, although we're not anywhere near over, for going above and beyond what we initially, originally anticipated this journey into the capital improvement program would entail. Many of us have put aside our day jobs and other activities to attend, so for the most part, we've had a pretty good attendance. And we've been, it's been pretty brutal, I think, since, you know, since we did the budget, we rolled right into the CIP. And we're still going, so.
That's why they call this a living budget. Goes on and on.
So I'd like to extend my thanks to all my colleagues.
And Mr. Mayor, let's not forget, after an election, if there's a major shift on this council, this may completely change again, which has happened in the past. So that's why it's more than a living budget.
Mr. Mayor, you may elect some harebrained councilman that brings up an issue like Rockhaven. You never know.
And let me go to Mr. Milano. That's the only card I have. Five minutes.
Don't complain.
Thank you, Mayor Nigarian. My name is Herbert Milano, City Councilman, City Staff. As I watch you go through this process, and I think that more than any other year have I seen a council undertake as much detail with regard to the capital improvement budget here. It is my hope that you take a look in the future at this capital improvement process as a function of age and population growth. Because I think that population growth is oftentimes what is left out of the overall impact that it has on the infrastructure and the rest of the needs. And it is my hope that parkland is always considered as an integral part of the infrastructure, just as sewers and roads and electricity facilities are. I'm appreciative of the effort and the focus that you've all given to the needs south of the 134 freeway. More than ever, I am able to see the impact that the lack of a viable voting population has on these decisions. And I know that there's a tremendous need to ensure that 100,000 residents really get involved and participate, to ensure that their needs continually get met. Because it's, Mr. Y, I think you were right in the first place, and I don't think you needed to apologize to the previous council members and mayors. This area south of the 134 freeway has been to a great extent neglected, and the numbers show it. I didn't think you needed to apologize for that. We have significant opportunities south of the 134 freeway, and you have significant unmet needs. And the unmet needs are for youth or for a population between the ages of five and, you know, and 60. I think that the approach that you're taking to expanding the mini-parks is a fantastic one, to eventually move them into becoming community parks. The concept of the tennis courts, I would hope that you would revisit the issue of tennis courts at Glendale High, because it's got one very positive, parking availability, and the negatives that it has is the scheduling that you need to coordinate. With Fremont Park, I'm hoping that you keep the areas for soccer play. So as you're looking at how to save costs, don't forget that we have very, very few areas available for soccer play. And lastly, with regard to Central Park and the Adult Recreation Center, if we think of that area as the central Glendale's equivalent of Bryant Park, you begin to appreciate the significant opportunities that we have because we already own the land. I want to touch upon the concern that Mr. Quintero has concerning that alleyway. If we use that alleyway as if we're a promenade for pedestrians that can hold traffic, similar to the way it was done on the exchange, then in a way, you're really expanding the areas of open space and expand the feel of the park in that area as well. The constraint that I've seen in all of these projects for parkland and soccer fields and so forth, and the expansion of Central Park, is parking. And it's your one constant constraint in all of the projects that you've encountered. And as I look at that capital, the summary, I don't see parking in here as well as part of that capital improvement. And I don't know if we're living behind, should we say, the proverbial elephant here. I want to also emphasize, perhaps, if there's still a chance, that because that area in Central Park is so rare and is so unique, that you maybe take a look once again at what Bryant Park has done for that section of New York, where the population is so huge, and perhaps the possibility of creating a public-private corporation, as they did, to fund, you know, the parking that is needed and to expand it into a true cultural venue for the city. We now know that the needs of open space and parkland and recreational opportunities and cultural opportunities are in dire need in the central part of Glendale, in the southern part. And I think it's worth taking a look, that we don't lose that opportunity, because I don't think it's going to come again once it's gone. And I want to just show my appreciation for the level of focus and effort that you've given, that I haven't seen a council give us much in all the years that I've been watching this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. There's nothing further. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned. So in three weeks.